Do you have a quote?
I was here to have a quote.
Yeah. Oh, is that what that is?
Good evening, I'd like to call the Pecosa City School Board Meeting to order, the August 20th meeting. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may have wondered why I'm sitting in this chair tonight. Our leader and Chair of the Board, Gary Carter, has a back problem and he is not feeling well this evening. And I talked to him earlier today and he sends his apologies. He would really like to be here and he feels really bad that he's not, but Gary, get better. We're gonna be, we're gonna be fine without you. We'll never be able to replace you, though. All right, we'll move on. Are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
There are none this evening.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to recognitions and I'm looking around. We were hoping to have Jessie Spencer here tonight, our student representative from last year, but doesn't look like she can make it, but we'd like to, again, thank Jessie for the wonderful job that she did for us. And I'd like to call on Dr. Parrish.
Yes, as Mr. Cast makes it to the podium, I'd like to ask Mr. Michael Wendell to come forward, please.
Mr. Wendell is the founder and CEO of AVW Technologies. He also served as a naval officer before starting his company. AVW is involved in modeling and simulation-based engineering. We are thrilled to have him here with us today because he's here to be recognized for a donation of $5,000 on behalf of his company to our schools. The funds are being used to purchase and implement a weather system at the elementary school that will enable our young scientists to work with real-time data related to weather. This data can be incorporated into all fields of study at the school and will be displayed on a large monitor for all to see. It ties in very well to our environmental theme that you all know we have at the elementary school. We can't thank AVW Technologies and Mr. Wendell enough for being willing to donate funds that are enhancing our instructional programs. We are so very appreciative of your generosity during what have been some very challenging fiscal times for us. So, again, thank you. When I, I actually received an email from him saying, "I'd love to donate to your school system," and it was like opening up a birthday gift that morning. So, we really do appreciate your willingness to work with us and once we get it going and we can get some pictures of kids interacting with it, we'll definitely get those to you. But thanks to you and your company.
Gary, I gotta check. Okay, moving on to presentations and reports. For a financial update, I'd like to call on Mr. Bowen, please.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Cast, School Board members and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I just have a few financial updates since our last meeting. I'd like to begin with a financial opportunity we've taken advantage of, and that is with a grant that we became aware of. This past session, the General Assembly passed the Public School Security Equipment Grant Act of 2013. The intent was to provide some funds to school divisions to assist with purchasing security equipment for schools. The grants are capped at $100,000 and are awarded on a competitive basis. Steve Pappas and I worked together on this grant and having identified a number of projects that were eligible at our schools, we submitted the application earlier this month and we hope to hear from the awards in the middle of September. Something new for 2013-14, Pecosa City Public Schools will be accepting Visa and MasterCard. Parents now have an option to pay student fees online. We have a new online portal and parents can access that portal from our homepage. It's on the left side of our page and it's under student fees. You will see several options there. You can see the fees that are posted, that's also in our handbook, student handbook, and also it has the link to pay it online. This is, we had several employees who have tested, who have children in the system, we've already tested, and the report is that the system is user-friendly. Parents, all they need to do is create an account and they will need to know the student ID for each child. The system is live, but we are asking parents to hold off paying online until the class schedules have been finalized and distributed. For the middle school and the high school, those class schedules will be distributed next week at Open House. I would like to thank Steve Bynum, our data specialist, who was instrumental in helping us get this off the ground. What parents will see this year is when they pick up the student schedule, students or parents pick up their schedule, they will see the classes on the front side. On the reverse side of that form, any class that has a fee attached to it will be listed there and they will also have a total. So, they can, on the day of Open House, we will have staff available accepting credit card payments that day, or if they don't pay that day, they can pay online. Our bank, Town Bank, has been gracious enough to lend us these credit card terminals just for the week, so this will be the only time that we will accept payments at the school is at Open House. Any other time, we'll direct the employee, the parents to pay online. In closing, I wanted to make a, I want to bring something to our attention. We will be bringing forward a recommendation to the School Board regarding the Virginia Local Disability Program next month. The VLDP is a result of pension reform that the General Assembly passed in 2012. One of the changes brought forth through the pension reform is a new hybrid pension plan. So, employees that are hired on or after January 1 of 2014 are now required to participate in this new hybrid plan. Now, that's different than the traditional plan that current employees are participating in. As a part of this new hybrid plan, we have to offer a disability program. Now, the Virginia retirement system has a plan, has a plan in place, a disability plan that goes with this hybrid plan. However, they've given localities and school divisions to make the option to make a one-time irrevocable election to participate in a comparable private plan. There have been several insurance companies that have created several plans comparable to the VRS plan and we are currently reviewing those plans now and we hope to have those, have that recommendation to you at the next meeting. And that's my finance report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Are there any questions?
I've got one. With the Visa and MasterCard payments, is there any significant change in the number of administrative hours required or is it, are there any savings in doing this for us?
There is. There's significant savings for the online processing. We have just instituted a new Activities Fund software program. We needed to do this because our old software system was being phased out. By going to this new system, it's actually saved us money. This new online payment system is actually integrated with our Activities Fund software. So, when a parent pays online, if they pay a marketing fee, if they pay a technology fee or the materials fee, it's actually electronically transferred to the appropriate account at that particular school and the bookkeeper has done nothing to handle any money or make any keystrokes. So, it's actually saving time if parents use that feature. So, we would encourage, for our benefit, for parents to use that online process.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question. It used to be that you couldn't get your schedule until you paid your fees, but I guess that's changed now.
That has changed. That whole process has changed this year. What we're trying to do is we're trying to make this as convenient as possible for the parents and as convenient as possible for the teachers because they have other things that they need to do. So, this year, what will happen is that students will pick up the class schedule from their homeroom teacher and they will visit their classrooms and then they can come to what we're setting up as a payment center. There will be four or five staff members there on Open House available to process those fees if they so choose to pay that day. We highly encourage it since we'll have the staff there to do that. They can still pay the traditional way with check or cash, but at Open House, we will actually have credit card terminals to process that way also.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Now, for the operations update, I'd like to call on Mr. Pappas. I can imagine he probably's been a little bit busy.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Cast, School Board, Dr. Parrish. Operations report will touch on several highlights of our busy summer and we'll start with safety. We're currently in the process of working with principals to set the dates for the many required drills that we have, many of which will happen in the first few weeks of school. We're also working diligently on the Virginia School Safety Audit requirements. We do this every year, however, due to the work of the General Assembly, many new requirements are being implemented and several of those will actually be reflected in the policies that you'll be voting on this evening. In tonight's work session, you will also hear more specifics about our updated crisis management plan. And over the last many months, PCPS staff and city staff, police, fire and rescue have been working together to fine-tune the plan. In the area of food services, last month, I mentioned that we were going to have a new parent prepayment plan. We've finished the rollover of that plan and we've notified both online and in writing parents who formerly had participated in the other plan about the new plan and any new individuals can sign up easily. We also, in the area of transportation, have deployed the Field Trip Creator software that was part of our transportation software last year. It was just a component that we hadn't deployed. It was just too much to do at one time. But this software will help expedite the creation of field trips, no longer requiring paper or a paper trail. It'll all be done computerized and instantaneously. This will really assist teachers and administrators in facilitating that process. Our bus routes, again, using our software, have been finalized with all the additions of students and the departures of students and those who graduated, and those were sent for posting this evening. Tomorrow, we'll be having one of our two required full-day-in services for all bus drivers and aides. In the area of custodial services, we just completed our summer cleaning projects list. Needless to say, all areas of the building have been deeply cleaned and will be ready tomorrow when teachers return. And in the area of maintenance, some of the highlights of some of the projects of some of the days include the removal of the decaying covered walkway at PMS on the Park Street side. You may see that as you drive down. We've also provided handicap access to the stage, the playing field, and we've repurposed a classroom to accommodate the needs of our special needs students. We've also repaired the cantilevered lobby seating at PES. We also provided opaque window treatments for all of our classrooms in PES. This was actually a suggestion through our combined lockdown drill that we do with the police. This came from them and we facilitated that change. And we've done some remediation for the drainage area on the Poplar Street side of the middle school, and you can see that when you drive around. And lastly, among the many things that were done and are not reported here, we created a new office for a school police liaison program that will begin when school starts. Officers will have access to computers and commit with people in the office and training for officers and school staff will take place before school starts. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. I've seen some paving going on at the primary school. What is, it doesn't look like it's everything, it just looks like it's a little portion of it. What's that all about?
Yeah, there were two areas at the primary school that had degraded significantly and we've, unfortunately, we had to repair those. So, that's where the buses are. You can imagine the weight of the buses is such that it just does a number right in front of the school. And the parent drop-off, the radius is very small there and when you have cars turning, it just chews up that. So, working with the city, together, we've gotten that project done and we did a little at the high school as well, between the tennis courts in the building.
Are we, or have we already put out some information about this school liaison with the police, let people know what it's all about, make sure that the parents, I mean, I'm sure everybody in Pecosa watches school board meetings, so it's probably a moot point, but what have we done so that some kids or parents are not completely surprised or kids don't come home after the first day and go, "There's a cop!"
Well, we are planning on it back to school night at the high school. Mr. Wright will be doing a presentation about it. All the students will be, the program will be explained to them. They have assemblies, I think during the first week, the early week of the high school, and so that'll be part of what the students will be told, this is who they are, why they're here. You know, again, they're just coming in and out of the building. They may only be there for a very short period of time to complete some reports, file some reports, but then while they're there to engage with students and with staff and may only be there a few days a week. We are doing a training session with the officers as well as the administrators next week at the building and a presentation is being done to the staff at the building as well. So, we're trying to get the information out as many ways as we possibly can and we'll add some information to our website as well when we get up to that first week of school, so.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one question. I've done some reading this summer on the possibility of working on our concession stands in our wrestling room. Has anything been moving forward on that? Any progress?
We have, the Pecosa Wrestling Association has met with us and has indicated that they may have some interest in doing some work on the wrestling building, which would include the concession stands. We're quite a ways away from finalizing that or know if that's actually going to occur and I will, as I've been doing, I will continue to update the board as we move through that process. But at this point, it's a very early stage and funding from that would come from outside groups, not from the school division at this point, so there's quite a few decisions that would have to be made.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Steve, you mentioned a couple of new requirements by the General Assembly. Is there any fiscal impact for implementing those requirements?
I think anytime we do anything that we're required to do, there's always an impact. It's one more thing we have to do, it's one more thing we have to train in the case of, and many of these are valuable. I mean, doing two lockdown drills a year is valuable, but it will take more time. Is it not valuable? It's valuable, but it does have a cost associated.
I would say that many of them, the costs are associated in staffing costs and staffing work that will need to be done. Again, they're certainly valuable and important actions, but the same staff that will be working on these things are, already have full plates and we'll just continue to add to that at this point, especially during this time period when we've seen so much cutting from the state. There's been no funding other than the competitive grant, which is only for equipment, doesn't help with staffing, to support any of the initiatives.
Thank you. Sorry for not knowing this, but the Field Trip Creator software, is there interaction with parents on this software or is it just solely for the classroom teacher?
It's for the teacher.
Okay.
And she or he can see any field trips they've ever created and if one teacher goes to Colonial Williamsburg and once that data is in there, then another teacher doesn't have to type it in. It's a drop-down and selected, the address, the route is all done.
Oh, fantastic. And field trips will not get duplicated, probably.
Correct.
Very nice. Steve, thank you. Mr. Pappas, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, for an instructional update, Ms. Colley?
Good evening, Vice Chair Cast, members of the Board, Dr. Parrish. This evening, I'm going to start with an instructional update that talks a little bit about our preliminary SOL accreditation data and our state accreditation data, and then I'll wrap up and let you know a few of the things we've been doing to get ready for the school year. So, just a, just a review from where we were last year. We are under two accountability systems in Pecosa, one at the state level and one at the federal level. The state accreditation is what I'll be talking about tonight and that is based on our overall achievement in English, math, science, history, and our high school graduation and completion rate. Last year, we talked a little bit about the changes to the federal accountability. We left AYP and started talking about AMOs, annual measurable objectives, and we'll talk about that later in September when those are actually released. I just want to make everybody aware that just like last year, we had new changes, the state is still adjusting that. We have new benchmarks, new AMOs in English, and some new provisions that we'll be contending with this year. But let's focus on our state testing and accreditation. And this year, the 2013 administration of our reading, writing, and science tests were new. The Board of Education revised our, both our content over the past few years and then we took our new assessments this year and they reflected raised standards and expectations. We just experienced our first test administration this year. It was online for the first time. The kids experienced the increased rigor of the test. There were about 10% to 15% technology-enhanced items and we walked through some of those last year, so students were working with those on the test. And the tests were revised to really make sure students were demonstrating critical thinking and problem-solving skills. State accreditation is based on achievement in English, math, science, and history, the benchmark pass rates that you see on the screen, and the graduation completer index. And you'll recall that that's something new we've been working with since 2011. The state has released our preliminary SOL accreditation status and based on the preliminary data, all Pecosa City Public Schools met state accreditation requirements. With that said, I'd like to give you some highlights, particularly in the area of mathematics. Since last year, we talked about those brand-new tests and how we worked really hard to make sure our students were prepared for that critical thinking, problem-solving. Mathematics did improve this year as teachers and students became better acquainted with the new standards and assessments. Of the eight tests that our students take in math, six of them increased in the pass rate and one, the seventh, stayed the same. And the seventh stayed at 90%. The pass rate for students in grade five math increased by 19 percentage points. The pass rate for students in grade seven mathematics increased by 21 percentage points. Pass advance rate for Pecosa Middle School students in geometry increased from 48% pass advance to 68% of our students passing advance. And the pass advance rate for Algebra II students at the high school increased by more than double to 35%. So, to summarize some of those highlights, this is the second year of the new rigorous math tests. It's the first year of our new reading, writing, and science tests. The preliminary reports show that we met all state accreditation requirements and federal accountability, the AMOs data will be released, we hope, we're anticipating in September, and I'll share that with you next month. When we come together in our work session tonight, we'll dig a little deeper into this state data that I've given you just a brief overview tonight. Before I take any of your questions, I would like to share a few more instructional updates, not on the presentation. Wanted to share with you that we have been very busy in instruction this summer and a highlight of the summer was our ITRTs coming together this spring. They listened to teachers who had said, "You know, we're off in the summer and it would be really nice if we could have some optional sessions that we could attend if we wanted to, to brush up on technology skills." And our three ITRTs, together with Dr. Cataldo, put together a menu of sessions offered at different times during the day, different locations, and I wanted to share with you that they were very well attended by teachers and the evaluation feedback that our ITRTs received was that this is something they'd like to see offered again. And I'd like to thank our ITRTs and Dr. Cataldo for organizing and implementing and offering these courses. Our leadership team just finished a nice three-day session of Leadership Academy, preparing for the school year and looking at some of our instructional initiatives and preparing for the teachers to return. And we've also just come off of a very successful two days of new teacher orientation, inducting our new staff, and they were treated this morning by the Coannis Club to breakfast and also recognized with a gift certificate to sort of jump-start their school year. So, just a few updates to let you know we're ready. Teachers come back tomorrow and the principals have been busy planning and making sure that we're ready to start the school year very well. Thank you. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Colley? I think if I was presenting that, I might say, "Since I was hired, test scores have increased." Okay, let's move along to the consent agenda. Ms. Sidner, could you present the agenda for us, please?
The consent agenda for this evening is approval of minutes of July's special organizational meeting enclosed, approval of financial reports enclosed, approval of personnel action enclosed, authorization to dispose of surplus property enclosed, and authorization to accept and expand funds in accordance with requests enclosed.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any questions about the consent agenda? Could we call roll Ms. McDowell, please?
Yes. Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to other matters. Item A, consideration of approval of minutes of June regular meeting and work session. Can we get a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Ms. McDowell, can you call roll, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, item B, we're going to, the second reading of policy revisions. I'd like to call on Dr. Parrish for this item, please.
Hi, yes, this is the policy revisions that these were given to you in June for your first reading and so we're bringing you, them to you for second reading and asking that you approve them tonight. As you remember, the book is quite thick because the General Assembly was very active this winter, so we have a number of changes based on laws that were made by the General Assembly and we, as always, got input from our school board attorney to make sure that we were putting these into policy appropriately. So, with that said, I would recommend that policy changes as brought forward to you tonight are passed.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we consider the second reading of the policy revisions and adopt them.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Ms. McDowell, can you call roll?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, the next item is the adoption of the new health textbook. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I need textbook adoptions that are made by the school division need to be approved by you as a school board. They do go through an adoption process with us in these tight fiscal times. It has been challenging to do some textbook purchasing, but we are bringing forward to you tonight a request to approve the Glenco Health textbook for instruction at Pecosa High School. We just needed to update, to get an updated textbook to use with those classes for our students.
Do we have a motion to adopt the new health textbook?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments?
No, an observation we made, you know, we used the last one for 12 years, so we've gotten some good use out of those textbooks.
Yeah.
And I've noticed that things have changed a little bit in the healthcare industry since.
Just a little.
Just a little.
Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, the revision to meal prices. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we actually brought some meal price changes to you late in the spring. As you remember, the Healthy Hungry Free Kids Act, which was enacted by Congress, has had quite an effect and an impact on our lunch program in terms of what we actually feed our students, but also in what
feed our students, but also in what we have to charge our students. And there's a formula that actually is created that guides us in what we have to actually charge for meals, but it is driven, again, by the federal government. So based on the sales that we had last year and the waiting that's done, we actually have to bring to you a recommendation to add an additional five cent increase for lunch prices only at the primary and elementary school to fulfill the federal requirements that we have. We had to get through the full year of sales in order to bring this to you. So it is a change that we do need to prove, but I want to stress that we're doing this to align ourselves with federal guidelines, not that we just willy-nilly are asking you for five cent increases. So as we've talked about at length, the changes do, because of the act, have really impacted us in sales with our students. Our students just aren't buying as much because they choose not to purchase the healthier food that we are now serving.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve the new meal prices?
I'll make a motion that we approve the revision to the new meal prices, or to the meal prices.
Can you give Mr. Melton a second?
Second it.
Okay, are there any questions? Is there an acronym for the Healthy, Hunger, Free Kids Act? HHFK. Okay, Ms. McDowell?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Cast?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any public comment tonight?
No, sir, there is none.
Thank you. Okay, communications, we'll start with Dr. Parrish?
Yes, well, first, I'd like to welcome everyone back as we're about to start the school year. In particular, I'd like to welcome Marissa. She is our new student rep to the board, so we're thrilled to have you with us, and thank you for giving up some time before school even starts, so. I also just wanted to thank everybody for all the hard work that they've put in to get ready for school, which, if anybody is unaware, it does start on September 3rd. So I do want to remind our community that we will have buses rolling on September 3rd, so your commute time could change a little bit. And also to parents, always those first couple of days, we have to work some kinks out of the transportation system, but we do our best to get, pick up our students on the scheduled time and get them home on the scheduled time. Also, in line with the policies, we have drafted a number of regulations that support the policies that we've enacted as a result of the work of the General Assembly. All of our policies and regulations are on this, on our school board webpage under School Board. You can see policies and superintendent's regulations, and if somebody wants a hard copy, they're certainly welcome to contact us at the school board office, and we will be happy to provide them with a hard copy of any of the policies or the superintendent's regulations. I did want to mention, because I know it was released yesterday by the governor's office, and I imagine will be in different media outlets, but I would just like to remind people, because I can't seem to go meeting without talking about budget and budget cuts, that it was announced that we had almost, or actually a little over a half a billion dollar surplus this year in the state of Virginia. But what I'd like to reassure everybody is not a dime of that will be coming to K-12 education, despite the fact that we were cut, and particularly our standards of quality funding were cut by the state. So what we're not seeing is there was a surplus, therefore, we did okay. We can give it back to you after having cut you. It's not coming in our direction. So I don't want the community members to read about that surplus and make an assumption that that means that'll come back to help us. And finally, I hope that everybody has a great start of the year, and I know I'm looking forward to convocation on Friday, where we will see all of our staff members together. That's my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Marissa, welcome. We're so glad you're here.
This year, the Pecosa Primary School Open House will be August 28, 2013. The preschool will be from 10:00 to 10:30 a.m. Kindergarten will be from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. First grade will be from 1:15 to 2:15, and second grade will be from 2:30 to 3:30. Pecosa Elementary School will also be held on August 28. All grades will be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The middle school will have theirs on August 27. Grade six is 12:00 to 1:30 p.m. Grade seven and eight are 1:30 to 2:30 p.m. Pecosa High School will have theirs on August 28 and August 29. On August 28, 11th and 12th grade will have it from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. And on August 29, grades nine and 10 will have it from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. The back-to-school nights this year are for Pecosa Primary School, September 23 for the preschool and kindergarten, 6:45 to 8:00 p.m. And on September 24, grades one and two, 6:45 to 8:00 p.m. Pecosa Elementary School will have theirs September 12, all grades from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Pecosa Middle School on September 19, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., all grades. And Pecosa High School will have theirs on October 1, all grades 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And that concludes my announcements for this evening.
Thank you very much, and well done.
Very well done.
Ms. Rollins?
I too would like to welcome Marissa.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the first year on the school board. It's gonna be fun. It's gonna be interesting.
Thank you. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I'd like to recognize and thank Mr. Joe Caccimilio and Dr. Mike Cataldo for all they do behind scenes in preparation and execution of our school board meeting. Thank you, gentlemen. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
Just welcome back, everyone.
Ms. Sidner?
Hi, welcome, Marissa and Ms. Rollins. Nice to have you. New faces. And we'd like to thank, again, AVW Technologies for their donation. That's great. Glad to see community support. And we'd also like to thank the Kiwanis for the new teacher breakfast and gift cards. I'm sure that was very much appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. Melton?
I'd like to welcome back all of our teachers and our staff members, and greetings to our new teachers and new staff members. Looking forward to the Special Education Advisory Committee's meetings this year. I have my list of dates. And I'd like to remind our parents and folks in Pecosa that on Friday nights, there's always something going on, and that they actually play football before and after the band show. So if you'd like to go see the band show, go out on Friday night. And just a, "Go Bulls!"
Thank you, Mr. Melton. I'd like to just commend the staff from Dr. Parrish shown down for the incredible job of always getting ready for the school year, and the teachers and everybody else involved. I know it's going to be an incredible school year, and thank you very much for all your efforts. I know it seemed that your summer was very condensed for most of you. And do we have any material for board review?
You do not this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much.